Board meeting.
The United States of America and two of the republic for which it stands, one nation, under individual representative justice.
Recording progress.
Orders of the day, Matt and Alena from Tug Hill might be on. Are you on for that or Lena?
Alena is on. Alena, are you there?
What's that, Vicky?
I know Alena is on.
I guess we got any questions, we'll ask you. All right, we'll move on. Three little minutes. December fifteenth, regular board meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. I'd like to make a motion to excuse Mr. Murphy from tonight's meeting.
Ed, you're not on, are you? Let's check it. He said he might soon be. Do we have a second on Dan's motion then? Excuse us. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, approval of vouchers.
General fund, eighty thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars and forty-two cents. Water, one hundred twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred two dollars and eighty-six cents. Sewer, twenty-two thousand, nine hundred eighteen dollars, eighty-nine cents. And capital, two hundred nine thousand, twenty-six dollars and five cents. The bills have been audited, and I make a motion this day being paid as audit. I'll second.
All in favor? Okay, Five Streets, utility construction project. You have anything on that, Matt?
The, uh...
Pretty much, I think, on a downhill side. It's just a matter of...
Right, it's just, uh, there's a repair that's getting scheduled for this month is all. And Paul, did you get a final payout from the railroad?
Yeah, Kevin has that.
Okay, okay, perfect.
That was part of the voucher tonight.
Okay, so he will get that?
Yeah.
We will get, okay.
Yep, it'll go tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
While I was looking at my phone, I was, he was giving me instructions to ask you for the, for the railroad payout. He's also on, on here.
Oh, Kevin's on there?
Yep.
Hello, Kevin.
You think he's on here?
Is that it, on the Five Streets?
That's it for Five Streets?
Yes.
There he is. Kevin is gonna update you on the wastewater.
Okay, let's go with wastewater. You there, Kevin?
He's still out.
He is, but...
So, I guess I can tell you, um, he's, uh, he moved a little.
I think it might be froze up a little bit.
Yeah. Okay, Kevin, I think we're unfroze.
I can hear you guys now.
Go ahead, you're, you're up for the update.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, I was talking wastewater.
Yep. Yeah, wastewater.
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, uh, so, contractor, the base site, SC Spencer, SCC have both been on site, the, the prep. Progressing as well as they can in the middle of winter. SC Spencer's pretty much ramped up their site work, um, so they're offsite for the, for the rest of the winter at this point. Um, and SCC is just doing some, some work on the lower building. They need to be finally, and they're going, or, and in April, um, so they're, they're starting to funnel, uh, the submittals into us, so... Um, that's, that's gonna be open as well. And I, I do, I do also wanna know, I think, if, like, the village received that. This is awesome news.
So that's it, Kevin?
I think, yeah, I think, I think the last thing he said there was APG is, is getting their submittals done. And that's American Process Group, that's the liner, and then, so, that'll start getting here, going in the spring. Yeah, the next one, the groundwater wild development project, we submitted that to the health department today. We had to do some redesign based on some health department comments we had early on. And then based on a second set of comments, we redesigned it again, and, uh, and now I think we're, we're moving that one downhill too, so, uh... We're gonna continue working on those drawings and get them ready, get a bid, bid documents ready, so when we do get the comments from the health department, we can get that out to bid this, this spring, so we're able to start, you know, late summer, fall. That's the idea, anyway. Is there any questions on any of those on the board?
No, case the board, Paul, I've been keeping track. Phil Walters been the inspector down there, and he's been sending very good reports every day they're working, so if anybody wants to see copies of the reports, pictures and everything, so, it works going good down there, so, we've got a good inspector on site too, so...
And I think, you know, another thing about the wastewater treatment plan, we met with Joe and Paul earlier this week, and, um... We haven't had any, any change orders on that, which, we don't have any, but we're also looking to, you know, maybe increase the scope a little bit, to get some of the items off the wish list into the project, so, we're doing that. We'll get those, that pricing ready, so you guys can make a decision based on contractor pricing. And we'll hold off to execute that until we get further down the road, get APG started, get that, get the rest of those contractors on, on site, so we don't have any surprises, but we should be able to spend some of that contingency money too.
All right, street lighting, LED conversion program. I don't know if anybody's noticed, but they have been around this last week, and they're still around this week. We got quite a few streets already done. I'm pretty sure, uh, if you drive around at night, you can definitely see the difference. I know they did my street this week, and I looked out, I don't know if it's reflection off the snow, but it seems a lot brighter around. So that project's ongoing, and I'm glad to see them in town, didn't see the ones up. Rezoning of industrial zone options. Did you have anything more on that, Joe?
Joe, I don't think it's been presented to him yet.
Oh, I didn't know. I thought you had a copy of it, Joe.
No, we, we met via Zoom with me and Cassandra. Ed was there the week before Christmas. And then, and Matt from Tug Hill, and the other girl, can't remember her name.
Lena?
I think it is. Another girl in planning.
Oh.
So then, the week after that, we went out, me and Cassandra and a couple of people, other people in planning, and actually drove around to kind of get a picture of the, the current industrial zone and some changes that might be made. So we made some changes to the original map that we, that Cassandra has sent to Matt from Tug Hill, and he's supposed to actually produce a new map showing basically a reduced industrial zone and changing, I think, what we call the neighborhood commercial tool, and some of these other zones down through there. So when we get that, I'm gonna present it to the board, but hopefully it'll come for the February meeting. So that's what's going on there.
Okay, village code update. What this is, is I know we talked at the last meeting about trucks and everything's blocked and parked on sidewalks, but there's no way for us to enforce that because there's nothing in our sidewalk law. If the board wants to move forward with it, this is a new local law that would address that, so then we'd be able to enforce it. For now, there's nothing in it.
There's nothing in there before about cars parked in sidewalks?
Paul and I, I know I looked, I'm pretty sure Paul did too, and that's why I looked. I knocked to Joe, and he said it would be easy to amend it and add this to it, so... That's what that's all about, is just, down the road, if we... If we wanna enforce things, we'll be able to.
I only have one question on it. As I was reading it over, um, the first line of the paragraph, is that redundant? Is it duty of every property owner to property owner? Or is that...
That's actually true. I seen that, there's, there's two owner to property owners in that first paragraph there. Is the duty of every property owner to property owner to maintain. Correct? The one shouldn't be in there.
I'm thinking it should be just...
The duty of every property owner to maintain.
To maintain, yeah.
That, that's a typo.
Yeah.
A typo.
Got it. Thank you.
So I guess if the board agrees with that, we would need to go ahead and schedule a public hearing on it for a February board meeting.
Make a motion, we schedule a public hearing for, to amend our local law regarding sidewalks at the next board meeting, which would be...
Uh, let's see, Thursday, Sunday, Sunday, sixteenth, maybe?
Sixteenth.
November sixteenth.
At four o'clock, right?
At four o'clock.
Call a second on that?
I'll second, I guess.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, comprehensive plan. We got a few things we gotta, gotta do on that. Probably the first thing we gotta, should do is talk with Alena, a couple of emails back and forth between Danielle, myself, and Alena. When we started the comprehensive plan back in October, we basically said, uh, who the committee members were gonna be, and it was in our minutes and past and everything, but Alena says we really should have what they call a resolution, to go along with our comprehensive, and so basically, this is what we would have for resolution. It would be as, "Whereas the Village of Lawwell Village Board wishes to develop a comprehensive plan pursuant to the New York State Village Law Section seven dash seven twenty-two, two, to identify goals, objectives, and strategies for the immediate and long-range protection, enhancement, and development of the Village of Lawwell, and whereas the Village Board has identified the following individuals to form the appropriate body to formulate a draft plan," and the names we had there were Carla Hellinger, Lisa Hessler, Edward Murphy, Henry Avalon, and Paul Denise. "Therefore, be it resolved that the Lawwell Village Board hereby changes this conference planning committee with the development of a draft comprehensive plan to be transmitted to this board for review and adoption." And so, if everybody's all right with that, we need a motion and a second to adopt that resolution.
We're just making them board members official, basically? We're making them board members official as the comprehensive plan? Is that what that's doing?
According to Alena, we needed this, we needed something official for our committee members, and this resolution would make it official.
I'll make that one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then some of the other steps we have to do on that, uh... The town and villages both, and I believe they're gonna do it tomorrow, we have to do a CCor, which I have here with Joe. And then after we do the CCor, it's gotta go to the county planning for review. And then when we, back from them, then the Village Board, we gotta schedule a public hearing on that, the comprehensive plan. And then we could put it in the newspaper and all that, and after the public hearing, then the Village Board can go ahead and adopt the resolution. And we have to have a plan in the office, and there is one in there for anybody that wants to look at it. And then, when it's finally official and done, uh, within thirty days, we gotta, of adoption, we have to send that copy on to county planning. So there's a few steps we gotta move through yet, but... Are you there, Joe?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I'm down to the CCor. And you said that it's pretty much all filled out, that we gotta do, said C two, adopt land use policies?
This, yeah, this is...
That's already, you got it marked out there already on that one?
It's a CCor, this is part one of the CCor.
I, sorry, Joe, I didn't hear it.
It's part one of the CCor. That's part one of the CCor.
That's what I got, yeah.
So this is what you would adopt to start the process?
And you said we got, okay, it says, "As a site of the proposed action within any local or regional special planning district, for example, Greenway, Brownfield, designated state or federal heritage area watershed management plan or other." Basically, it's a no. Then you got, "Is a proposed action located wholly or partially within an area listed in adopted municipal open space plan or an adopted municipal farmland protection plan." We're talking whole area, so, you think that'd be a no on that, Joe?
Uh, yeah, I think so.
Then you got down here, we just need to put in which fire protection, emergency medical services, the project site, what parks serve the project site. You got project details, proposed, and potential development. Basically, that section is not filled out. We do nothing with that one, Joe?
I don't think you need to do anything with that one. I think, I think all you need to do is complete C, uh, because of what your project is, and then, uh, you can go ahead and approve it at, approve part one, which you can then sign, Joe. And then parts two and three, we can do, uh, after we receive any input from anyone else.
After we do this part one, Joe, can, uh... After we do part one, can this, can the comprehensive plan go on to the county, or do we have to wait for two and three?
Yeah, you do part, you do part one, and the comprehensive plan can go to the county with a copy of part one. You don't need to do part two until you're ready, you have a public hearing, you get comments from the county. You could do part two later on, as long as you do it before you approve the comprehensive plan, but this starts the process.
But like the public hearing, we should wait till we hear back from the county on that, right?
As far as, what's that, Joe?
I see, as far as a public hearing goes, shouldn't we wait until we hear back from the county?
Yeah, yes. All, all part does is start the CCor process by make determinations you've made, that starts the process. You don't have to, you don't act on the rest of the, like, form, the parts two and parts three, until later on, but at least this starts the process.
So do we need a motion to accept part one of the CCor and, and send it on to the county? Should be, Joe?
Yes, I'm gonna do that. Yes.
We have a motion for part one of the CCor?
Aho.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then a motion to send the comprehensive plan on to the county planning.
I make a motion, we'll send it to the county planning board for review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fee of craft surcharges, this is on the sewer. Two thousand dollars for December twenty-twenty-one.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
November twenty-twenty-one and December twenty-twenty-one on the water surcharges. It was zero.
Paul, you know how many, you know how many gallons every... He broke the minimum, huh?
Yeah, broke down on a flow chart. Um, I hadn't figured it, but...
The day-to-day looked pretty good to me, Paul.
Yeah, I'm gonna say anywhere from eight fifty to nine hundred thousand.
Looks like right before Christmas Day, he might have been busy or something. Nine hundred, over nine hundred is where your, uh, surcharge, that's right?
No, one point one.
One point one, okay.
For a daily surcharge, for a week? Yeah, for a weekly, it's gotta be over nine fifty.
As an average?
Right, a weekly average, it's nine fifty. Daily, it's one point one.
Food is to craft, and it looks like it's going pretty good.
Anybody okay with that? I guess I jumped ahead and then went to local law, we already did that.
Yep.
New York State Retirement Standard Work Day and Reporting Elected, I guess, uh... We need a motion to accept that. Everybody have a copy of that? Different ones that are in the retirement system with us?
Were you good with the way it looked, Danielle?
Yeah, I had Pam helping with it, so, it'll be up on our website after, today.
We need to approve that? That need a motion, didn't you?
Yeah, I think, yes, we have to prove it over here.
I make the motion.
Yeah.
I was just gonna let you know that Alena hit the session here too now, if there's any questions for her or anything.
Got a second on that?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Direct call, January newsletter. Anybody have anything on that? They wanna ask Mickey, he's always on there.
Hey, thank God the Zoom's done for you guys. I think the meeting's the twenty-fifth.
This other naturally Lewis, if nobody has any question on, oh, River Area Council Governor. It's basically for your information, that's, that's how they're gonna handle basically solar farms within the county. It's not really gonna affect the villages that much, because I think there's some land left for the village to put solar farm up on. Next one's information from Lewis County Real Property, taxable value for six, one through twenty-twenty-two. Quite interesting if you look over it. One thing I wanted the board to notice on that is, I know I've had a call, Paul's had a call. They're working on their, probably their budget for next year, I know, wondering how much we're gonna increase, like, salt and sand and sweeping and... Hang on, I had a little grumbling on that, thinking we were charging too much, I guess. If you look here, their property is worth over fifty-two million dollars, and that's nineteen point one five of our tax-exent property in the villages, and we're not collecting any...
Schools.
School tax on, or, I mean, village tax on, and then they turn around and complain because we raised our sweeping and salt-sanding contract by five percent, so... It's just kind of...
They're free to get there.
Thorn in my side, I'm told.
Put that in. Shouldn't they bid that out anyways? I guess because it's municipality doing it for municipality, but I know, I know back when I was the mayor, the school was disappointed when our figures... It wasn't factual, but it got back to me, they were searching around, we found out that our price was good, so... Paul probably know based on these figures, well, that's a good price or not, I mean, it doesn't matter if that's what we're asking for. That's what it's gonna be.
The question was brought up to me by the school, their vendors have gone up two percent, why are we going up five percent? And my thought is, we have, we've been going up five percent because of the cost of fuel, insurance, trucks, manpower, et cetera, et cetera. And if, my thought and Joe's thought was, if the school doesn't like the price, we don't have to do it. Pretty much, no skin off our back, we, we don't do it, we don't do it.
Have they always done the school?
Yeah, we've always charged it. All of a sudden, they started complaining.
And I don't know if it was a complaint, it was more of a question, but... It was an email to me, so, I don't know.
Well, I had a call from the superintendent when we sent the last contract out, over. I just want everybody to be aware of how much taxes exempt that school.
Have you calculated what it basically costs us to do it as best you can? Okay, and it's, it's basically flat?
Yeah, it's a fair price.
Okay.
For what we have to pay for the sand, the sweeper going in there, the men, like I said, the trucks and everything else.
Well, the biggie is, while you're doing that, you know, in fairness to us and in fairness to everybody, because school's important, we have to take time from other priorities to do that, and at certain times, that can be an issue in itself, so... We, do we need a motion on, on the price or not?
No, no. I just want everybody to see, tell them what was going on, see just... Because if you were to figure that out, if they had to pay tax on that, we'd lose quite a bit of tax money.
Well, we took a hit a few years ago with the county, and we lost, I think, about seven thousand dollars a year when that went to transitional living. And we still keep, we own the parking lot, and it's kind of been a gnawing at me. We, we hustle to get that cleared out in the morning so that county employees can park there, and, uh... We keep it clean, and we lost seven thousand dollars, so, you know, every time we turn... You know, every time we turn around, something more becomes tax exempt.
Well, I think the reason we're hurrying in the morning to get things cleaned out is just a lot easier to plow a parking lot when it's not full of cars.
Well, we could plow it at five in the fall night too, because they don't wanna pay taxes.
Thank the county ought to take it over.
I don't think that's a bad idea. But I don't think you'll see them stay in that building either.
Officer Committee reports, do you have anything, Joe? Hello, Joe, do you have anything for us?
Uh, I did receive a letter from...
Did you get that letter from Joe McNichol?
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you, Joe.
Did you get the letter from the county attorney today concerning the construction project at the county building?
Yes.
Okay, she, she's requesting that the village board consider granting the exemption under the Monroe County, uh...
Does she talk about this letter?
Yes.
Basically, Joe, uh, do you have to respond to her for us? We... I know she's talking here about lead agency and all that, we aren't no part of that, but when it comes to their undertaking on projects within the village, uh, like what they're gonna do up there on Stowe Street, I see no reason to exempt them from, uh, having to go through the site plan regulations and the zoning. I don't know if you remember, Joe, when we were doing our pump station, they put a stop order on us, and we own, we're the village, and we had to go through all the hoops, so I see no reason to have the county have to do it. And they can, they can have special meetings and things, so it's not really, they wanna move on the project. But they did, they put a stop order on us and it cost us a lot of extra money, going through everything, our engineers were up here at different times because of it. So, that's why I'm against...
If we're gonna exempt them, let's just exempt everybody, I mean, they're supposed to be leaders of the coast.
I mean, but this letter came in late today, so... Really get a chance to get it out to everybody.
Well, my question becomes if we exempt them, or if something's done wrong and it becomes a legal issue, does it come back to the village that, well, you exempted them, so it's your fault?
We could be...
Did you hear that question, Mr. Russell?
I, I did, I mean, if you go through the process, and it's totally up to the village board what you wanna do, you go through the process, analyze the nine criteria, and you decide that they're exempt village zoning, that's all you have to do. I don't, you're not, you're not incurring any legal expenses if something happens, but it's totally up to you whether you wanna do that. It's not something you have to manually do. And if the town has been put in the same position, they would have to do the same thing. And this just came in today, so...
Do you wanna table it for further discussion with the, the county, Mr. Mayor? Or do you wanna act on it tonight?
That's what the board wants to do, I mean, they haven't really had a chance to read over that letter, but... Do you wanna wait and see what the town has to say? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we can...
Just a thought.
We can only do a special meeting if we have to, too.
So we'll wait on that till the next meeting or whatever, Joe?
I'm sorry, say it again, Joe?
We'll wait, we'll wait till the next meeting or we'll call a special meeting if we decide to do something.
Can I ask a question?
That's perfectly fine, I'll relay that to them.
Is this, is this an example of lack of planning on their part doesn't constitute an emergency on ours? Possibly.
Did you see that?
No, I've not, I've been listening now. Don't I have this in my packet?
No, it came in late today.
It came in late, we didn't get it...
Until it's afternoon.
So then for now, wait, we'll have, get a copy of it and have time to digest it a little bit.
So we'll hold off on that for the time being, Joe. So you have anything else for us?
Yep.
Is that it?
That's all I have.
That's all you have, Joe? Paul? Yes? That issue with the water, should we bring that up? I will, if you think I should, on the fire department? Uh, yeah, you can, I think. I've talked to over members and they're happy with it. What's happened here is Martinsburg Fire Department had a fire up there and, and, uh, they had permission to tap into a fire hydrant on Cascade, down there on the corner of Cascade Ave. When the firemen actually tapped into it, they tapped into the one up on top of the hill which belongs to the town of Alaville, and drew other water out of, out of that one. And the town of Alaville, I guess, feels that it's hurting their residents because of the, what they have to pay in the water districts and things. So basically, they sent Martinsburg Fire Department a bill for four hundred and fifty dollars for water. The village of Alaville, we've never charged anybody for water that's had fire. We haul water out of the village to properties outside the village and things, and so I feel it's unfair to Martinsburg Fire Department, I feel it's unfair to the poor people that lost their, uh, building. So basically, I talked with Bob Mullonlow and Paul and I talked, and our thought is we have an estimate of how many gallons that was. That's how they figured to come up with the four hundred and fifty dollar bill they sent to fire department. What I would like the village of Alaville to do is when we read water meters, and we read that master meter with the town, next year, just subtract the amount of water that town Alaville's billing Martinsburg, and then the town of Alaville, if we do that, will cancel out their bill to Martinsburg. No, no fire department or anybody will get billed for water.
So moved.
If the board's willing to do that.
So moved.
I think it's fair, I'll second that one.
Home favor?
Aye.
But I think the simplest way is, and that's right, Paul, we'll just subtract it from the master meter. Subtract that amount from the master meter and...
Moving, and moving forward, I think anybody should know that when it comes to fire, I don't think we should say, well, where are we gonna get the water, that's the least of anybody's words. Let's just get the fire, and for the safety of the community, let's do the best we can to get it out, so I don't see it as an issue ever.
Does that sound good, Joe?
Works great. Would have been easier to hook up the hydrant.
And I, and I understand that, it would've saved it, but a lot of times, we just draw the water right out of the firehouse and we go to other municipalities, so, and we don't charge for that, so... Wish they would've hooked up, but that's, that's fine.
It could've been miscommunications with the guy that was driving a tanker truck, but I just mean, I don't feel anybody should have to pay for water to put out a fire.
I mean, they were gonna hook up to our hydrant, right? If they didn't hook up to our hydrant, it wouldn't have been an issue.
There wouldn't have been an issue.
It's still our water, in a sense, so...
The, the reason I had told them to hook up the village hydrant that morning was the cost issue for the town, I was trying to not have that be an issue with the town, so...
Well, I think moving forward, may I ask this question of this board? If our fire chief wants them to hook up to the town, what's the difference? I mean, we can always work that out on the backside, can't we?
That's what we're doing.
But I'm going forward also, so, Joe, do what you gotta do.
Sure.
I guess that's fair, Steve.
No, I just...
Thank you.
I just feel that the fire departments need to be made whole on that one.
Yep, whoever.
Clerk Trezor?
Um, no, the village code update, we kinda skipped over before, that's in the process. Um, Mr. Russell helped me with some of the verbiage that needed to be updated, so I don't have a timeline of when it'll be available, but I know that they are currently working on it. It wasn't that much more to have the whole book updated through twenty twenty-one than what was originally budgeted. And then we can read, look at this again, come by the time to see what we think for twenty twenty-two, for each year, we can keep it updated. Uh, and then, Joe, did you wanna mention about us getting that grant?
Oh.
Do you want the letter? To nine hundred and...
Yeah, I thought, I thought this was gonna be in your package. Basically, we got a letter from, uh, New York State Department Environmental Conservation. The village was awarded, uh, nine hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, uh, in a grant to go towards our wastewater treatment plant upgrades that we're working on. Pretty much will pay for the disinfection part of everything down there.
Is that something we've, we applied for already?
It's all, it's, it's applied for, and we've been awarded it, there's a letter right there, it says we were awarded that. And the other thing, we got an official letter, uh, Joel Russell is gonna be on his own with Robin effective February first. And it's wanted to know if we wanted him to keep all the records and everything, and if we don't do anything, he'd be more than willing to keep it, and I think with everything we got going on, yes, he should have all the records and things in case we gotta go back, because E O C's always coming in with something, they need a copy of this or copy of that, so whether or not to trace somebody down on Barkley and Damon, although Joe said in his letter, he would be working somewhat with Barkley and Damon too, if he needs to. Is that right, Joe?
Yeah, all that's happening is that we're, we're moving from Barkley and Damon to ourselves, we're not going anywhere, we're staying in the same spot. None of our files are going anywhere. Damon has agreed that they all stay with us, unless somebody wants other representation, things are just gonna continue on as they have been going on, so...
So anybody have any questions for Joe on that? Hopefully, everything can be a smooth transition. Should for us, we're not changing attorneys. Is that it, Danielle?
Yeah, that's all I have.
Chief of Police, you have anything?
Just a hand to your monthly reports, and then there's also an additional report for you to look at.
I have been talking with Randy a little bit, and I, I know he's been doing some research as far as getting, uh, somebody to possibly handle dogs in the village. We have, we have laws on our books, uh, the town dog control officer is not authorized to enforce, so we're looking into possibly having somebody that's doing the work part-time, we only have maybe, Randy and I figured this morning, maybe twenty, twenty-five cases a year at most, but I know we found one person that's willing to be a backup, but I don't know if we were able to get a hold on other gentlemen?
Wasn't able to get ahold of the other one, yeah.
So, just wanted the board to know, that's something we're kinda working on because...
If any of the board members have any ideas or ideas on pricing, that's something else I've been trying to talk to these different people, Paul. What are they willing to do it for?
Because like I said to Randy, get us like a, a figure for like a yearly contract or so much per pickup, you know, if they have to go out. Actually, we had a dog in here last week that was, that was found, caught in the building, the guy dropped it off, but luckily, we found the owner.
Yeah, he was so cute, we took him to the vet, um, see those chips, and actually, I reached out and met, and he put up a post and walked home within like thirty minutes, I think. I was gonna take him home for the night, I was hoping, but...
He took to Danielle, he was ready to go with her, he jumped up in her lap and he was all over her.
I did, Mayor, I did check with Boonville, they're, they're a combined service between the town and the village, and they also have a two kennel operation that that dog control also takes care of there. So that's kinda comparing apples to oranges there in that one, we're not even in the ballpark, but that, I think, was like fifty-eight hundred. But that was for the town and the village, and then also to operate and run that kennel with the dogs in it, which we wouldn't have that issue. So I don't really think, but that was just a rough figure of what, what they're doing.
I mean, while we're talking this, I mean, it's extra monies we're gonna have to come up with, uh, and I meant to mention this earlier. All the department heads and things, it'd be nice if you'd start on your wish list for next year, because we gotta get going on, here in February, on our budget for next year, so... Just keep that in mind, start writing down your wish list, get your ask events. Is that all you had, Randy?
Yes.
Superintendent, anything?
Um, it's winter again, just to remind the residents that it is their responsibility to shovel their sidewalks up in front of their properties. Um, obviously, we've been out plowing and sanding, today we actually, uh, was our first day with our new snow blower that's attached to our new loader. Um, had somebody up here from CAT to kinda work with my heavy equipment operator to get him to work, uh, get him to use it. Tomorrow, we will start at around four o'clock in the morning on State Street, pulling back out the snowbanks, and it'll be our first run with our snow blower, so hopefully, everything goes good. And that would be it.
Capital future planning, anything there for anybody? I think Ed's off, so not nothing. Personnel, anybody have anything there?
I don't think Charlie or I have anything.
Finance?
The, uh, bills have been audited, I do not know, I didn't get a report from Pat as far as, uh, where he's at with the reconciliation of the, of general fund and a lot of fund. I, I did close out the, um, the attorney Ricky Stanton's, and I will close out Judge Scordo and, uh, and when, in March, when they're, they're done. And then we will no longer be a part of the courts, so...
Also, on our outside audits on all the village accounts and the justice court, basically, the outside audit confirmed it's done with that audit, and we should be receiving official notice and actual copies of the audit shortly.
Usually, they come and present it too, correct?
I asked Hannah about that, she said they used to, but prior to since COVID, they just send it in an email, so they'll print off copies and I'll go up to our town and pick them up. So I think we're gonna have one for each board member, and then we'll keep a copy in our clerk office.
Fire department, anything there?
Mayor, uh, I was unable to attend their last meeting, and I am gonna be out of town for a week of the next meeting, so I'm gonna ask our chief that's here if he would fill us in on anything that he thinks we need to know.
Uh, nope, nothing right now, we're, we're in the process of doing some changes to the kitchen, um, just for what services are offered, but other than that, it's just in the very early stages right now. I do, I forgot to submit, um, we accepted a new member of Tyler Thomas at our last meeting. Um, he was a transfer from Harrisville, he moved to Alaville just recently, um, he comes with a lot of training from firefighting and stuff, so I would submit his name for board approval to be a member.
You wanna do that now, or should I?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion if we accept Tyler.
Home favor?
Aye.
Look at that, no, everything's good.
Mayor, may, may I go back? I've read this letter, and one of my concerns is, in reading it, in fairness to the county, if... I've read this letter, and one of my concerns is, in reading it, in fairness to the county, I still, I still think the timing is a little poor on the letter itself. But I think that we as a village need to do whatever we can to ensure, even if it means calling a special meeting.
Well, they are actually requesting that. If you read that, second page, they're not actually requesting to do anything tonight. It says, it says a special meeting.
Before the 24th.
Under respective boards, basically. That's what they're.
They need it before the 24th for, for the bond. So I think we need to, to do whatever we can because they're talking a lot of money here, and bond is going to be a huge issue. So we have to work on it.
I agree with you, yeah.
So the 24th is on Monday?
It's tough when you get something right before a meeting. It's trying.
24th of February?
Trying, trying justice. So that might have been a little harsh in my comments, so for that, I apologize.
Our next board meeting is the 16th.
So we're good.
Town is ready to act and had the bond resolution for their special meeting on February 24th. So I assume that's when they want our approval by. So our meeting on the 16th, so we may not have to do a special meeting, basically, but I think we still need to have some time to think about this. Or do you think we should?
I'd hate to see, I'd hate to see them not be able to incur, or I'd hate to see, because if they incur a higher boundary, who does that affect?
Well, it affects everybody.
Yeah, so. I, I think we're okay if we wait till the 16th and review the controls and the counts because I think.
Yeah, I think we're okay to wait till the 16th too, but somebody needs to respond to the, to the letter stating just that, you know? I mean, we'll be a week ahead of you guys. Is that okay to make that decision?
And if not, not call special meeting, right?
Not, we'll have to call a special meeting.
Sounds good.
I'll send an email tomorrow to them.
Because I'm sure the town will be talking about it tomorrow. Break of the, copy.
I mean, just because they're exempt doesn't mean they have, can't, they don't have to meet the requirements anyway. You see what I'm saying? They still have to meet the requirements, right, y'all?
That's right, yep.
So if, in fact, they do violate the village code or whatever, they're still in violation is what I'm saying. Just because they're exempt from the requirements don't mean they have to meet them. They're being exempt from the secret process and the whole process of going through three months worth of meetings is what they're exempt from.
But the problem you're on into in a situation like that, if they do something wrong, sometimes you can't correct it.
Yeah, exactly, so. They still have to file a zoning permit. They still have to meet all the requirements. And if, in fact, they can't meet the requirements, then they're going to have to go through a, you know, a zoning board of appeals meeting or something like that to meet the requirements.
Thanks, Tim. Does that require a secret?
Possibly. That's what I'm saying, the process.
Not my business.
The process is started anyway, but.
I would think both those projects, especially the one that's not in the village, the one that's going to be down in the town, I would think that would definitely require a secret.
Well, they both do, yeah.
But shouldn't this have been brought up a few months ago? Doesn't that seem like?
Well, it says, in the letter, it says they were just starting this the first part of December, so you are correct. They should have thought about all this ahead of time. I agree.
Which is, seems like we're doing something special for the town for about every, everybody else.
Like Dan says, you got to look at it in the end run too.
The, the 19 million scares me.
Yeah, who's going to pay for that? The taxpayers.
19 million is a lot of money. Bond points are going to be crucial in that project.
Yeah, but Dan, I realize that's a lot of money, but when we did our Five Streets project, that was over $19 million, and that pump station was part of the Five Streets project. And they put a stop order on us, and we had to go back through zoning and, and planning, and Geico was up here probably three or four extra times than they needed to be. And so all I'm saying is, I feel the county should still have to go through the planning and zoning process.
Kind of what I'm, kind of what I'm saying though, Joe, if, in fact, and I don't know anything about the stop work order, but if, in fact, you were in violation, then there should have been a stop work order put against you, and you should have had to go through all that. That's what I'm saying, that they're still going to have to meet the requirements no matter what.
Well, at the time, we were told we were exempt, and then the county come back said we weren't.
I think, I think, I think in the communication of the letter that's sent to the county, we need to bring up the fact that we think the timing could have been a little better, uh, summer first, versus whatever, and that, uh.
Yeah, again, we, none of us know the whole process.
Right.
We don't know whether they just approved it at the end of December, you know what I mean? So there's, that's why the letter, no, I don't know. I don't know.
And, and the mayor's right. They did. They put a stop work order on us, but, uh.
Well, like Ted said, because they had an issue with something.
Yeah, if there was an issue that you were in violation of, then there should have been a stop work order, and you should have had to go through all that.
Right.
Because there was something wrong. Just my opinion.
But in this situation, who reviews the codes for them?
I don't know what the stop work order was about.
No, moving forward for the county. The county takes care of.
Yeah, they still go through the office, our office, the building board's office.
But without me thinking out loud, what kind of violations are going to be cited if there is one?
They'll have to meet their court.
We'd be dead, we'd be dead hard enough, I guess, on this side.
So somebody needs to respond to the letters.
Yeah.
I can send a letter or an email tomorrow and just say that our next meeting scheduled for February 16th is, you know, confirm that that's okay. If not, we can hold a special meeting.
Or give us, or give us more information than this, than this letter has also.
I can request more information too, so we can.
Charlie and I will be at the town board meeting tomorrow, and we'll let you know what their opinions are on it, and we'll let the trustees know.
Because the next thing is, have they been to the planning department, you know? Which is joint.
That's what they're asking.
I mean, we have a joint, town and village, but.
I could probably find out a little more about it myself, so. I mean, I don't know what they're talking about with this nine factors under the county of Monroe to determine.
There must have been some kind of a court case or something.
Yeah, that's part of the case law, the county Monroe litigation, and, and the court, appellate court established nine criteria for a municipality to meet if they're going to request exemption. That's what that's about.
I guess we want to see what that is.
I would like to. Review them factors, actually.
And I can provide the board with a copy of that, uh, case if you would like.
Yes.
That'd be good, Joe.
Well, it says that the county and their engineering.
I'll get it, I'll get it and get it sent to you. I got it somewhere in my office to think.
Says that the county and their engineering team will attend the hearing and address any questions or providing information. Your local municipalities do not already have, so. If, in fact, they could attend our next meeting.
Well, let's wait and hear what the town does tomorrow, and we could put that in the letter that we'd like them to show up on the 16th.
Yeah, yeah, you can wait probably.
Would it, would it be who was to have town and the village sign a joint, right?
No.
I think you got to do it individually, don't you?
Yeah.
Town and village.
Can be crafted pretty much, you know?
When you look at their project, one of them's actually located in the town and one of them's located in the village. Two different projects, yeah.
What I know about the village one, I don't think the footprint of the DSS building is really changing. It's just a bunch of renovations and stuff like that, but there is additional buildings, like a maintenance shop, and I don't know if that's the only extra building or not. I haven't actually seen them.
Actually, the hospital surgical unit is probably in the town. It's probably outside the.
Well, I'm sure it is, probably, yeah.
So, and that, and that's, that's a huge project.
Okay, the planning board and zoning board, and that's it, I believe. Municipal board.
Not really. It's just a short meeting, done.
Town, they get their meeting tomorrow. County.
Just one thing, uh, the 25th, uh, they're having their joint meeting with all the municipalities on the water study that was done, and I guess Paul and Joe's there going to town on behalf of the village. That's all I have, man. What time is that, David?
I believe 5:00.
Maybe?
Recreation, I guess, uh, they have a few hiccups with the skating when the weather warmed up, and I think everything's running smooth now. Anything different, Paul?
Nope. Kids are over there skating every day.
Men's League's a lot of fun. Those guys.
Are you part of that?
Yeah.
Are you?
I'm a guy.
Now, do they do it in Watertown too? Do they tra, you guys travel?
No, we're guys trying to get some games together with the fire department, police department.
You just play here?
What's that?
You come here and play?
Yeah, yeah. They have a men's league in Watertown, but I don't play there.
Other than the newsletter, does anybody have anything on the river area councils?
Their next meeting is next, actually, it's the 25th too, at 6:00. That's Zoom, right?
All right, brings us down to public comment. Anybody have any public comment? Anybody have anything for the second session? Something to tell the agenda. Someone else to make that motion?
I will make the motion to adjourn this meeting.
All in favor? Oh, I need a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?